Of the Extra Planning Board, I'm declaring that an emergency exists and I'm invoking the provisions of RSA 91-a colon 2 comma 3 parenthesis B parenthesis. Federal, state, and local officials have determined that gatherings of 10 or more people propose a substantial risk to our community and is in its continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with that determination, I also find that this meeting is imperative to be continued, to be the continued operation of town government and services, which are vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this body physically present in the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public assessing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner, under unusual circumstances, the usual rules of conduct and decorum apply. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call in attendance. When each member states their name, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting. I'm Langdon Plummer, I'm Chair of the Extra Planning Board, and no one is here with me. Uh, Pete Stuckler, next, please.
I'm Pete Cameron, uh, no one is here, although Nancy's somewhere in the house. She's not in the room with me.
Thank you. Gwen?
Uh, Gwen English, I am in the room by myself at the moment.
Okay. Uh, Dave Sharple's, our Town Planner?
Yeah, Dave Sharple's Town Planner, and I am in the room by myself.
Molly, who?
Did you say Cowan, Molly Cowan? Yes, okay. I am on my deck by myself.
Okay. I hope you don't have to stay on the desk all night. Uh, Jen Martel?
Hi, uh, Jen Martel, I am alone currently.
Okay. Peter Stuckler, Peter?
Hi, this is Pete Stuckler, I am alone.
Okay. And John Gruder?
John Gruder, alone in my office.
All right. Nancy Belanger?
I am alone in my apartment.
Okay.
Nancy Belanger, yes, I'm here.
Okay, Nancy is an alternate member?
I am.
As is Peter. Uh, however, Aaron is not with us at the moment, so I need to appoint one of the alternates to, uh, participate. How about, Peter, we have you act this evening? And in the event that, uh, Aaron joins us, I'd ask you to step down at that time. Thank you.
Good, thanks.
First order of business are the approval of minutes of May 14th, our last meeting. So, the forward's open.
Motion to approve the minutes of May 14th?
Hey, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I received an email today, I didn't forward it on to the Planning Board, uh, at this time, but it was from the applicant's, uh, legal counsel with several suggestions, uh, to the minutes. And, uh, one, I know that kind of what I said, it wasn't complete, um, so I agreed with, but there were several others that I, you know, question if, you know, I just want to make sure it was actually said, so I sent it off to Daniel Hoyer, the, our recording, uh, Secretary, and, and having him go over it and, you know, make sure and look at the relevant parts of the video, uh, to make sure that, you know, any of those suggestions, you know, are actually what was said, and if they are, I, I don't have an issue with, you know, bringing that back to the board. I, I will forward that, but I would ask if you'd indulge me to table the minutes until the June 11th, uh, meeting.
That's fine, uh, John, would you retract your motion or change it?
I sure will, and I will, uh, retract my first motion and then motion to table.
Second? Moved and seconded it, uh, and those, we have to do a roll call vote, so I'm gonna start here, uh, Peter, how would you vote? To table the minute, oh, you're not, yes, you are acting, excuse me.
Uh, yes, and I guess I would say I have some comments on the minutes as well for whether you want them now or next time.
Uh, John?
I will vote to table.
Jim?
I vote to table.
Uh, Molly?
Yes.
And Pete?
Yes.
And Gwen?
I'll vote to table.
And, uh, I also vote to table. I would suggest, uh, anyone having comments, perhaps Dave, that they would email those comments to you? Okay, good. So, motion carries? All right. On new bus, business and public hearings, there are two, two cases this evening that are closely connected, and I would suggest that probably we put them both on the table at the same time because of their interconnectivity. Uh, so, I will read the, uh, what the agenda, the application of Gateway and Exeter LLC for proposed lot line adjustment and subdivision at 170 Epping Road. The lot line adjustment will transfer 2.10 acres of land from tax map parcel number 47-7 to tax map parcel number 47-6. And subsequently, a proposed subdivision of tax map parcel 47-47 into two lots in conjunction with a mixed use development being proposed for the site. The subject parcels are located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, Planning Board Case Number 19-50. So, Dave, we should order, should we order, open these both together or order, open them one at a time?
I, I think you can do it either way, I mean, just, you know, opening them both, I think both are ready and complete for review purposes, in my opinion.
Okay. So, I'll proceed, then, with the second case, application of Gateway and Exeter LLC for site plan review and a wetlands conditional use permit for the proposed construction of a mixed use development at 170 Epping Road, parenthesis TM number 47-6 and number 47-7, close parenthesis. This proposal includes a 224-unit multifamily residential complex, a two-story 48,560-square-foot mixed-use building that may include a 20,000 square foot YMC A daycare facility, office retail space, and possibly a restroom along with associated site improvements. Subject parcels are located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District and is Planning Board Case Number 19-16, and I would ask, Dave, if these cases are in fact ready to be heard?
Yes, in my opinion, they are.
All right, um, Chair, uh, entertain a motion to open these two cases? Moving, please. I'll say. Could you state your name when you make a motion?
John, John Gruder, motion, and Pete.
Thank you, and Pete's second? For the record, thank you. Okay, uh, can count again, uh, gonna start with you, Pete? You are in favor of opening these cases, yea or nay?
Yes, yea.
Thank you. John?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Pete? Pete? Pete Cameron, turn on the sound, please.
Before we leave this, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I, I have, I have a question, I have something I need to say at the end of, of this vote.
Okay. Gwen? Your vote?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous vote, I declare the case is ready to be opened. Pete, you had a comment?
Yes, sir, um, these are two separate and distinct, um, applications, although interconnected. If for one reason or another, the, um, lot line adjustment, um, matter is denied, then the next, uh, that would be case 1915 should be denied, then case 1916, uh, can't proceed for, won't be able to proceed forward. I just thought I'd pass that on. They're connected, but they need to be, and they will be separately voted on.
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
There are separate motions for all.
Okay, uh, opened the meeting then to, oh, we, yes, we voted to open the cases, thank you, just thinking this through, uh, we voted to open these cases, and, uh, I'm not first to open the, the public hearing, as long as we're gonna be speaking as we progress at this point, and first ask, uh, our Town Planner, Dave Sharple's, to, oh, excuse me, I need to indicate to the, Daniel Hoyer, our Recording Secretary is also here, I don't see his face, he didn't last time, but didn't mean to overlook you, Dan. Uh, okay. So, Dave, would you, you've got the floor, would you review your notes with us, please?
Yes, thank you, I'll, I'll review my memo from first, thanks for, uh, meeting again, uh, in these times, I appreciate the Board's efforts on that. Uh, and if I freeze, I, I mostly haven't, I've been doing a lot of Zoom, but if I freeze, you know, hopefully not in some awkward face position, uh, but I will, I will have to shut down and reboot network, so I'll be back, so if that happens in this meeting, just, just, no, I'll, I'll be back on, I just have to reboot, it's on occasion. The applicant has submitted, as you said, a lot line adjustment subdivision application, um, to consolidate and re-subdivide, uh, two tax maps situated on Epping Road into three lots, there's two lots existing now. The applicant also submitted a wetlands conditional use permit and site plan review application, uh, for proposal to construct a mixed use development on two le, two newly created parcels with frontage on Epping Road. Uh, the proposed development will include three multifamily residential buildings consisting of 224 units, uh, above just under 50,000 square feet, uh, of commercial building and associated site improvements. Uh, the subject properties are situated in the C3 Commercial, Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District. Uh, the applicant appeared before the zoning board of adjustment on May 21st, 2019, and was granted relief to permit the proposed construction of a multifamily residential complex as part of a mixed use development, uh, plan being considered for the subject property. A copy of the decision letter and minutes from that meeting were enclosed in your packet for your review. Uh, the applicant, uh, part of that was, uh, an affordability component, that 25% of the units, uh, will need to be affordable. They have submitted, you know, language on that, if I, if I remember correctly, the language said it would be for 40 years. Uh, the applicant appeared before the Planning Board on October 10th, 2019 for design review. I did also enclose the minutes from that meeting, so that could refresh you, if, um, if you don't remember the meeting, or vaguely, uh, one item raised by the Board was in regards to, uh, maintaining a wildlife corridor through the parcel, I think there was, you know, I remember there's some discussion on that, and this matter was discussed internally and at the Conservation Commission, and it is my understanding that the main wildlife corridor, uh, is in the rear portion of this site, which will be protected, and I did ask Kristin Murphy, that's why she see her on there, uh, she was gracious enough, our Natural Resource Planner, she was gracious enough, gracious enough to join, then she'll be on the meeting, should the Board have any questions on that issue or wetlands or Conservation Commission, uh, discussion, but you have the memorandum from them, uh, because they appeared before the, the applicant appeared before the Conservation Commission on two separate occasions, November 12th, to present their wetlands CUP application and a request for a wetlands waiver, again on May 12th, uh, 2020, to discuss the possibility of including recreational uses on the proposed conservation land currently being, uh, presented for well and impact mitigation. Uh, the memo from the Conservation Commission I had mentioned is in your packets for your review. Uh, the applicant also appeared before the Technical Review Committee on December 6th, uh, 2019, the TRC and the UEI comment letters and the applicant's, uh, response letter are enclosed for your review. Staff continued to review the revised plan set and responses to the TRC and UA, UEI comment letters, and a second TRC meeting was scheduled for February 20th, uh, which subsequently canceled, but a second TRC comment letter dated March 19th, uh, 2020, and a UEI comment letter dated March 13th, 2020, were provided, uh, to the applicant in lieu of that meeting. The applicant has submitted revised plans that are before you, supporting documents and supporting documents on May 13th, 2020, and that's what you have in your, in your latest packet. Uh, staff is still working through the latest responses with the applicant, and I'll, I'll get to those in a minute. Uh, the applicant is requesting several waivers, uh, five are which are outlined in a letter from Hannah Swanson dated November 19th, 2019, with the latest revision date of May 13th, 2020. The applicant also supplied a letter dated, uh, May 11th, 2020 outlining a request for two additional waivers, uh, regarding recreation space and recreational impact fees. And in addition to that, I did get an updated, I don't know if you have that yet, I just got an updated, they added a, another waiver request, um, recently as well. This is a, uh, large project, and there is a lot for the Board to review. Uh, this application includes a subdivision, conditional use permit, and site plan application along with, uh, I believe, I'd say seven waivers at that time, but I believe there are eight now, but the applicant can, uh, correct me on that. And another component of this project is the traffic impact analysis that is worth brief discussion here. Uh, Stephen Purna, the applicant's traffic engineer, provided an, an initial traffic impact analysis when this project was initially submitted. The, uh, however, the, the scope of that study, uh, was insufficient according to town staff, and our third-party review consultant that reviewed it, we should really look at the, that scope of the study stopped at Cronin Road, and this will, uh, you know, likely have an impact on the Route 101 interchange, so we asked for the scope to be, uh, expanded to include that. And in lieu of, uh, expanding the scope of the initial study, the Economic Development Director, Darren Winham, worked with the Tax Incremental Finance Committee and secured funding through a Warren article in, in just this past March to develop a, a corridor study of Epping Road that includes an analysis of the impact of this project and what potential solutions which should be implemented, implemented to accommodate, uh, the future traffic flow. Uh, town staff was still, when I wrote this memo, was still working with VHB on this study, and it is worth noting that in addition to local approval, the project, uh, triggers approval from the NHDOT or review from the NHDOT because it's in a controlled access right-of-way, and they're asking for review, the DOT has been asking for review, uh, we feel that that review should happen, um, due to the anticipated impact to the Route 101 interchange, which they have jurisdiction over, we do not. Um, I did recently, as far, uh, with, I'll get to that in a minute. While acknowledging, uh, the applicant's letter dated March, uh, 18th, 2020, saying, uh, quote, "The urgency of an approval," I, I do, would like to hear from the Board and any public before formulating any conditions of approval, before any standard conditions of approval. There are also a few outstanding, uh, staff comments that still need internal discussion, and I did say in my memo that, however, if the Board does get to a point where it wishes to act on the application, I would be prepared with suggested conditions of approval. However, I got a recent, uh, email earlier from the engineers, a town engineer, that we had a conversation with VHB about this traffic study, and, and it was unanimous that none of us, including the third-party, uh, consultant, felt that it was appropriate at this time and to, 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 uh, recommend or be prepared with suggestions of conditions of approval tonight, because we're just not there yet, uh, with the identifying the traffic impacts and what's needed. We are working diligently toward that, but it's, it's still gonna be another week or two before we can nail that down. Uh, I would encourage the Board to provide direction, maybe on the waivers tonight as well, if you get to that point in the meeting, uh, so in the event that the application is tabled, then the applicant will have time to revise and resubmit plans before returning to the Board. Uh, and that's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who will be presenting first for the applicant?
I believe it will be, uh, Mr. Petropolis, I'll pass it to him.
Okay. Jim, are you turned on? I see your lips moving, but I can't hear what you say.
He is unmuted, and I believe I heard him earlier.
How about right now? Yeah, that's, that's good now, yes. Can you hear me? I can hear you, can everybody else hear, Jim? Petopolis? When you want to do? Yes? Go back to you? Means nod your head. And how about right now, is that better?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I apologize for the inconvenience, um, this is my first Zoom meeting, so I'm bound to screw up, so please do not hesitate to scold me or tell me how to better do, uh, do my presentation. Um, as David said, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for coordinating this meeting. Uh, I'm here tonight representing Tom Monahan, who's in the room with me, he's masked, his temperature is 97.4, and, uh, uh, he had a little difficulties himself, so, uh, we are together in my conference room at my office. Um, also joining us from the project team is his son Jeff Monahan, who's also one of the principals in the project. David Tenza is with us, uh, David is an attorney with Welles White and Fontaine in Nashua, New Hampshire, uh, and David is kind of pitch-hitting right now until Attorney Jay Leonard arrives, he is also in another meeting right now, he may be joining the call a little later. Brendan Quigley is our wetland consultant from GOV out of Exeter, he's with us. Steve Purna is with us, and Mark Fugere, uh, who prepared the fiscal impact in his, uh, statement, and is one of the industry leaders in workforce housing, uh, he's joining us tonight as well. Um, as you read in the record, Mr. Chairman, we're seeking two cases before you, a fairly simple lot line adjustment subdivision plan, and then, and then a site plan, as David said, with, with a, a number of uses, a commercial use and a multifamily use. Um, what I'm gonna try to do is be very brief tonight, I'm gonna try to be thorough, I'm gonna try to move in a fairly quick manner, um, I'm gonna provide some background on the subject site, uh, talk in detail about some of the project information, uh, talk about the description of the project, and then maybe open it up for some questions, I know it's kind of, kind of tough to sit there and listen, uh, in this environment, um, so I've got about a 15, 20-minute present, and then I think I'll call timeout, David, if it's okay, we can talk about the project, and if we decide to move forward to the CUP or to discuss some of the waivers tonight, I'm certainly happy to do that. Um, David, do I have shared screen availabilities?
You should, you're a panelist, that's the point, but I'll ask, the IT folks?
I think I do, hold on. Okay, can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I've got five screens that I'm using this evening, I'll be talking from Mr. Chairman, and the first, of course, is the aerial photo of the project. As background, you know, Tom Monahan and Gateway and Exeter LLC purchased this property in 2018, it's the former King property, and as I'm sure many of you know, there have been numerous development proposals over the years on this property. Uh, Tom, do you recognize the importance of the property? Uh, it's the first property you see traveling into town, uh, at Exit 9, um, and he knew its importance in terms of its proximity to the town. Um, his idea was to develop the front part of the property along Epping Road and try to protect the backland, and ultimately convey that property to the town, so they would be interconnected with the 212 acres that the Garrison Glen Corporate Park dedicated back in the late 1990s, and that property abuts this site here to the west. Uh, Tom and his son Jeff, their vision was to develop a workforce housing project upon this site, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that this evening as well. In May of 2019, the Zoning Board of Adjustment granted a variance to allow multifamily residential project, uh, as part of a mixed use plan. The conditions of the approval of that zoning were as follows: the remaining backland stay undeveloped, 25% of the workforce housing rentals, uh, as defined by New Hampshire state law, workforce housing shall remain for a period of 30 years. Units are to remain as rentals for 30 years, and there not be more than 224 total units. It is a well-informed presentation, um, we appeared before the Planning Board conceptually back in October of 2019. Since then, we've been working diligently to progress the drawing, uh, I think it is fair to say COVID-19 and the disruption to the kind of the public meeting process has hurt us a little bit, um, but we, we hope we're back on track. So, let's talk a little bit about the property here, total of 60.3 acres, you will recognize a small house lot, uh, located along Epping Road, I could probably, yeah, so there's a small house lot along Epping Road that currently exists, that's on Lot 6, and the balance of the land is known as Lot 7. Uh, the property is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial District. We're abutted by the highway to the north, Epping Road to the east, several commercial properties to the south, here.
Excuse me, Jim, hold on, we're getting a lot of background noise, is everyone muted? I see, Paul Roy might not be muted. I had, I was just, I don't know about others, I was just having difficulty hearing some background noise going.
Okay, Dave?
Yeah, Paul Roy, could you please mute yourself until which time you speak? Thank you.
Good to go.
Sorry, Jim, yeah.
Now, I've gotta start all over. So, we're abutted by the highway to the north, Epping Road to the east, commercial properties to the south, including Garrison Land Glen, and then that wonderful undeveloped land to the west, it's part of the town property. Together, we have about 700 feet of frontage on Epping Road, the land is currently wooded, however, it was forested in 2014, and you've seen the property from the road, it's fairly flat, there is a slight topographic gradient from Epping Road, uh, westward to the back of the property. Uh, Brendan Quigley has performed wetland flagging of, of the front 20 acres, and those results have been incorporated into our plan set. Um, he has also identified, uh, no less than 10 vernal pools in the back of the property here, and so it became readily available to us as we were looking at development upon this property, that that backland was more environmentally sensitive because of the vernal pools, and of course, because of its proximity to, um, the town overall, to the west. Utilities to service a project like this are located in Epping Road. So, that's the backstory on the, uh, that's the backstory on the characteristic of the land. I'd like to move to case number 1915, which was the plan of land, the lot line adjustment and subdivision, it's case 1915. And it's a fairly straightforward survey, uh, subdivision plan, two parts to the plan. Essentially, we're relocating the lot line between Lot 6, the small lot, um, and Lot 7, which was the parent lot, we're actually picking up, um, you know, that lot will contain about two and a half acres, we're contained about a quarter of an acre today. And then the second part of the subdivision, Mr. Chair, is the balance of the land will be subdivided into 47-7, which will be 14.278 hem frontage on Epping Road, and then the backland, as you will have learned- And then the backland, as you will have learned in the description by Mr. Sharples in my presentation this evening, that backland will contain forty-three and a half acres. And ultimately, it will be conveyed and merged with the town of Exeter property here to the west. Again, the plan's fairly straightforward, and there are no waivers associated with that particular application. I will now move towards the site plan if I could. So assuming the subdivision, of course, moves forward, what is being proposed on both of these lots is a mixed development that will contain multifamily residential in two buildings here and here. That total two hundred and twenty-four units. And a commercial building, two-story, located near the, near Epping Road. That will intended to include a daycare facility, offices, and retail spaces allowed in the C three zone. Project is to be known as Gateway and Exeter. Again, new Lot Six. This is a two-story, forty-eight thousand square foot building. Twenty thousand square feet plus or minus would be dedicated to the daycare facility. There's a playground area located in the fenced area behind the building. Local YMCA has expressed interest to Mr. Monahan in this space. We believe we have a letter of intent for this particular location from the YMCA. The plan budget seventeen thousand, three hundred square feet of office space in the building, as well as about eleven thousand square feet of retail spaces. Upon Lot Six are ninety-eight parking spaces. I know we're going to talk about parking as as we move forward with the plan, but there's ninety-eight spaces on that particular lot. Lot Seven, as I just mentioned, again, frontage on Epping and ordered in this manner will contain the multifamily residential part of the project. Four levels of living in the building. There's a small L-shaped building here that contains about seventy-five units. And then there's two, two L-shaped buildings that kind of form a U here, both four stories. Connected with a four-story hallway here between the two buildings to provide a little angle break on the elevations. But that will contain approximately a hundred and forty-nine units. The breakdown is a hundred and sixty-eight units of one bedroom and fifty-six units of two bedroom. Total parking for that facility is three hundred and twenty-two spaces. So let me talk about a couple of quick elements to the plan as it's kind of blended together with this commercial use and the multi-use. They will share a main common access here at Epping Road, and that access is lined up with the exit, well, the lined up with a curb cut for the mobile Duncan Donuts facility located across the street. We'll also have a second curb cut to Epping Road located behind the proposed commercial building. The notion of shared parking is something we'll discuss as the meeting goes on. It was discussed during our October discussion meeting. There'll be cross-access parking and utility easements shared between these two lots. Other improvements include sidewalks throughout the project. We have delivery van parking spaces for the e-commerce culture that we now live in at select locations. I think there's four locations throughout the project. Amenities for the project will include an outdoor swimming pool, outdoor sitting spaces perhaps, a fire pit, and a children's play area. With regard to stormwater, again, as everything is kind of grading from Epping Road back, we're capturing stormwater in two locations. These stormwater treatment practices are essentially constructed wetlands. They'll be very well vegetated. And they will accommodate and address the qualitative and quantitative aspects of our stormwater runoff. The project enjoys fifty-nine percent open space, where twenty percent is required in the zone. New site lighting throughout the project. Exeter's got some nice lighting regulations. They seek downcast lighting, dark sky compliant. And then the lighting will be reduced by fifty percent after ten PM. We did supply a landscaping plan, Mr. Chairman, in our plan set. It really focuses on the main entrance to the project, as well as the entrances to the building. But the back of the property, as well as a good portion of the front of the property, will remain naturally wooded. We do have a perspective drawing of the project. A couple of things to note is some of the woods that will remain behind the proposed multifamily buildings. You can see our main entrance here. This is the two-story commercial building in this location with its parking in the front. As I mentioned, the two buildings for multis are four stories in height, pitched roofs. And then a combination of varying exterior materials, a stone or brick down low and different type of paneling and colors as we progress vertically up the building. Same thing with the commercial building. Mr. Chairman, a couple other items before I, before I conclude. The application did include a couple other elements that maybe you don't normally see. A fiscal impact report was provided for the project. It was prepared by Mark Fugere, who's on the call. Mark's report essentially estimated revenues created by the project. And it also evaluates impacts to schools, fire departments, police departments, and other divisions within the town. Mark's report concluded that the project will have a positive impact to the town and that the addition of workforce housing will assist Exeter in maintaining their compliance with the New Hampshire Workforce Housing Statute. Traffic report was submitted as well. Mr. Sharples provided his thoughts on the traffic. Mr. Purna prepared a study to review the counts that currently exist out in Epping Road. He projected trips from the development. He determined the impacts to the corridor to the AM and the PM peaks. And then he evaluated the traffic operations for our two driveways. And he looked at site distance as well, and that's a fairly straight, flat stretch of Epping Road, so site distance is very good along our frontage. Mr. Purna's conclusion to his study was the driveways can operate under stop conditions. He had suggested recommendations for lane geometries on our site entrances, which we've incorporated. And he's made recommendations for right turn tapers coming into these curb cuts off of Epping Road. Yes, Dave did a nice job in his report to then further identify the approvals that were received by both the selectmen and the town meeting vote regarding tax incrementing finance funds to be used in this location. And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but it appears that the plan is to perform a corridor study along Epping Road in that the TIF also funds actual construction, design permitting and construction of improvements from Exit Nine to Continental Drive. Currently, that's a two-lane road. I think the vision, I think what the, the town vote approved essentially was to incorporate a third lane, a center turn lane in that stretch of road. It's about a thousand feet, maybe a little less than a thousand feet. And I think sidewalks were also possibly included in the TIF approval. We do recognize that our curb cuts may require DOT permitting and will certainly begin, begin that process. I think there was a little communication breakdown, probably on my part on that, so we'll, we'll try to catch up on the driveway permitting side of this. Wrapping up our construction, it's the hope to begin summer of two thousand and twenty. The project will be phased. We get into the site plan sets and phasing plans. It's likely that the twelve acres that are being used for construction will, you know, the site work will occur simultaneously. And I think the building program was that this building would be built first. The second smaller apartment building would be built second, and then the commercial building would be third. And one of the reasons we prepared the phasing plans is to put pen to paper to show what site improvements go with each part of the building. You know, I think staff was concerned, hey, you know, if you build this, what's the remaining part of the site going to look like? How much parking are you going to have? You know, what about, is your lighting going to be functional? What about landscaping? And those elements are included in the phasing plan to hope it make it simpler as the project is built out. We have received a number of approvals and permits. We mentioned the zoning variance to allow the multifamily with workforce housing component back in May of two thousand and nineteen. We have been before the Conservation Commission. One of the waiver requests is to work within the Conservation Overlay District, which is really in the center of the property. And we received their support in favor of that request. We have received our New Hampshire DES Alteration of Terrain Permit, which really looks at stormwater and erosion control. We are in the process of working through the final details of our New Hampshire DES Wetland Bureau permit. And as Dave mentioned, we have been working through the TRC comments. We've had two rounds. I actually think we're pretty close. But we'll, we'll find out in further discussions with Dave what's, what's remaining. So, Mr. Chairman, that's really the presentation. As Dave said, I do have waivers and conditional uses, but I think it might be a good time for me to take a sip of water and maybe ask the board for comments and questions. I'll take diligent notes and we'll try to get some answers. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to go back and, and ask me to paraphrase and outline some of the waivers and the CUP request, I'm definitely prepared and happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. I guess first I'd ask if the board has any questions. I can't see everyone, so Dave is keeping an eye on your hands, whether they're up or not, so if someone has a comment or a question.
Let me just jump in on that. I don't see anyone's hand raised at this time, but I I also want to note that there's one attendee. I don't know when they came on, not panelist. The name is Jim Menahane. And if you have, if you want to talk, I don't know if you missed, you know, you were during this part when I said it, but if you want to speak during the public hearing, just raise your hand. It's like a click button that you can click on, raise hand, and I'll, I'll, I'll notice it. In the meantime, I do have two panelists that have their hands raised. Gwen English and Jen Marta.
Okay, let's start with you, Gwen.
I just have a very quick question, if Jim can answer this. In looking at the plan on the, next to the proposed residential units on the, between those and Epping Road, what I thought was upland, it looks like you have it as a, as a pond. Could you clarify what that is? In, in the image that you just were going by, it looks like it's a, a body of water.
Sure, Gwen. Thank, thank you. Can you, can you folks hear me?
Yeah, just to the left of where your hand is, and
Yeah, sure.
I have that part as, I have what looks like water is upland and wetland around it. And I'm just confused by the image you're showing.
So let me, let me describe that, and if we need to have Brendan jump in, we can. The, the, again, this entire front twenty acres, Gwen, was, was mapped in accordance with the latest jurisdictional wetland guidelines. This particular area is a, is a combination of upland and wetland. And what you see here in the open water color was actually standing water that we have found on the property on numerous surveys that we have have seen on the property. It is a pocket of area. It doesn't really have a defined outlet to it. It is associated with some of the other wetlands within the main body of the property. But as we began developing the property, and as I said at the onset, Tom's vision was to develop the front. You know, Brendan and his team said, look, there's a lot of, you know, I'm going to use the words, there were a lot of low-quality wetlands out front. But this particular area was of pretty good quality. And he asked if we could try to protect it. So it's kind of a long way to answer your question, but that area is a a combination of wooded area that will remain of wetland and standing water. And we tried to show that, you know, in, in our graphic as well. I think this is the Florida version. It looks like a lovely little pond. But it is standing water, and it's, it's a nice area, and we thought we would respect it and keep it.
Okay. So, and I, I, I don't want to go into this now because I know everybody has other questions, but you look at this, at that area as being more valuable from a wetland standpoint than the area that you have as parking for that building to the right of it. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Gwen. Jen, you're next, I believe. Jen?
Sorry about that.
There you are.
Sorry about that. So I have a couple of questions. My first one is, I was looking at the Conservation Commission's report or recommendation letter. And they referenced some endangered species found or reported on from the Natural Heritage Bureau. And I was just wondering, I don't think I saw that report in the packet. It may have been in there, and I just missed it because it was a pretty big packet. But I was wondering if that was included and what, what endangered species exist on the site and what measures are being taken to protect them.
Hey, Gwen, Jen, I'm sorry. That's a good question. I'm going to ask Brendan Quigley from GOV Environmental Services, who's on the call. If, if Brendan, you could respond to that one. I appreciate it.
Sure. So the the endangered species, I'm not sure if we included the Natural Heritage Report in any of the local submissions. But what was identified as potentially being on, on the property was a turtle, and I'm trying to get to exactly which one. I believe it was spotted turtle. And a particular iris that looks like blue flag iris, but it's not a bearded iris. And that one in particular was an older record. I think it was probably something identified during the, the time period when one-on-one, when Entertains was being constructed. The only place that that would occur since it is a a well and plant that really does grow in water would be this semi-permanent area of water that, that Gwen was just asking about. And in fact, we, we did have some correspondence with Amy Lam from Natural Heritage Bureau that, that is the case, and she agreed that that would, if, if it was there at all, it would it would in fact be left, left intact. As, as far as the turtles, and I believe Fishing Game also added in after the fact, Black Racer, which is a snake. We, we did as we normally do and addressed those with basically some, some simple design requirements for stormwater management where the various basins and outlet structures are designed so they, they don't have sumps which function as basically entrapment, pitfall, and, and collect, collect those species if they are tracked on the site. So we've, we've also gotten concurrence from them. And that's reflected in the Alteration of Terrain Permit, which I, I believe we've received approval for. And the imminent wetlands approval as well. And then that was, that was it. The only other one is something that, that shows up on everywhere in New England, and that's the northern long-eared bat. And that's a federal species. So that's usually addressed through a, a time of year restriction on when you can cut the trees, which ends trees, which ends at the end of June. So that should likely not be an issue for the plans on this, on this project.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I had actually two other questions for Mr. Petropolis, if it's okay, or I could go, we could go to somebody else if.
Just, I
Good, good, Jim, why you got the
Hold on, like, yeah, I I see that, I just, Kristen Murphy's hands up, and I think she might want to talk about this topic. So maybe can we just let her jump in and then go back to Jen if it is about this topic?
Yes, I was thinking we should ask Kristen to speak.
Yes, she's got her hand up, so if she could chime in and speak now if it's about this topic, you know, just stay on this topic and then get back to Jen, it would be appreciated.
So, yeah, generally I'll just defer to Brendan on this, but I just want to clarify. So the turtle species that was identified in Heritage was the wood turtle. And they did also identify swamp white oak population, which Brendan did discuss in the Conservation Commission, so he could probably elaborate.
She's breaking up a little bit.
We're losing you, Kristen.
Okay, do you hear me now?
Yes.
So swamp white oak was also present. And, did you hear that?
Yes.
Yes.
And then wood turtle was the species, not the spotted turtle.
And
Where is the swamp white oak?
So there, it's, the swamp white oak itself is not the protected species. It's a natural habitat, exemplary habitat. And it's swamp white oak basin swamp, which I had forgotten about. Apologies, we have a lot of, a lot of these, and they often have the same thing. So yes, it was in fact wood turtle. The same, the same protection applies. But the swamp white oak basin swamp, there aren't any on the property. I can't guarantee there's no individual swamp white oak trees. We did in fact look for swamp white oak during the tree survey on the front of the property, which is being developed. We did not go and survey all the trees for the entire back 43 acres. It's likely that there is swamp white oak somewhere back there. But the swamp white oak basin swamp is something that, I guess, easy way to explain it would be a red maple swamp. Instead of red maple, the dominant tree would be swamp white oak. And if you, if you look at the map that was included with the NHB report, there does seem to be areas of that, somewhere in the vicinity of Connor Farm Wildlife Management Area and the little River Bloody Brook Wetland Complex. Not too far down, because this would be in the wooded areas, not the marshes. Kind of one of the things I'm actually on my list to go and check out sometime. But not, but not on this site.
Okay. Anything else, Kristen?
No, that's it. I just wanted to clarify that bit. The Conservation Commission did, or several members of the Commission and I did walk the property, and I would generally agree with Brendan, we didn't do 100% survey, but we did not come across swamp white oak on the property.
Okay, Jen, back to you then, I guess.
Okay, so my second question was, I was wondering if Mr. Petropolis could get into the parking a little bit and the parking counts and how he alluded to the shared parking, and I know we talked about that in the design review. And I was just wondering like how that's been moved forward and how he kind of sees that working particularly, I guess my particular concern is, you know, if you're talking about shared parking and it's like a daycare and residential, well, a lot of times kids are dropped off at daycare at 7:00 AM and people aren't really leaving for work yet, so is that really going to work? So I just was hoping to get kind of an explanation of how that might work.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is just quickly outline in response to Jen Martell's comment, how we approach this matter, because when we discussed it in October, I could sense that it was something, I actually think Ms. Martell asked us to look into it in greater detail. Our waiver, one of our waiver requests seeks the following. Your code for this development in total requires 538 parking spaces. We are proposing 420 parking spaces. And under your section, your Article 5.6.5, Mr. Chairman, it gives the planning board the authority to grant reductions as part of a site plan application. And it also, under 5.6.4, recognizes the concept of shared parking may be utilized by a project of two or more users that share a common parking area, so that it's used more efficiently. For this particular project, the residential piece will have peak parking demands at different times than the commercial piece. And so what we tried to do is quantify that. And what we did, I don't know if Mr. Chair or if members of the board have had an opportunity to read waiver request five, but we put together a table that looked at six different time periods during the week. Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Monday through Friday, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Monday through Friday, 12:00 AM to 6:00 AM. Saturday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Saturday, Sunday, 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM. And then Saturday, Sunday, 12:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So we looked at six segments during the week. We took the four uses, the multifamily, the offices, the retail, and the childcare facility, the daycare facility. We looked at the required number of spaces, and then we apportioned a percent usage during those six time periods. And for instance, on weekends, the daycare facility has little or no use, so we put 5% to it. However, during, during full periods, things like offices and retail, we put at 100% use. And we essentially used 100% use for the multifamily residential, except during the normal business hours of Monday through Friday. And what we did is we totaled those weighted values and found that the peak time period was Monday through Friday, 6:00 PM to 12:00 midnight, which is evenings during the week. There was a requirement for 394 parking spaces here, and we're providing 420. During the business day, 341 required, again, providing 420. And then so on and so on. And so we looked at each of the six time periods during the week in this weighted value approach, and we found that we were satisfying by at least 10% the peak of our parking estimates. And so that's why we believe we're justified in asking, in asking for the waiver. I know it's kind of a long answer, it's kind of a technical answer, but all that information has been submitted as part of our waiver request.
Do you, as a follow-up question, do you anticipate the daycare facility having children bused to or from? In other words, some daycare facilities offer morning care before school, so, you know, mom and dad drop the kids off at 6:37, the school bus comes and picks them up at 8:00 and brings them. I'm wondering if that's part of the program, that's, you're probably going to have to lose several parking spaces additionally for that bus drop-off zone.
So I, during the process, I had reached out to the director of the local YMCA, who's got interest in this facility, and asked him to tell me how does drop-off work, how does parent drop-off work? And he did, Jen, he did indicate that they have one bus a day, I think, for middle school students that would enter into the site, go around the back of the property, and while parked in the aisle, it would drop the students off into, oh, I'm sorry, on the side aisle here into this entrance, and then the bus would leave the site. So there's a momentarily drop-off of several middle school students is what he had said. Other than that, it's mostly parent drop-off and parent pickup. I asked him, is it curbside, or do you park and do the parents bring in? And he said, actually, there was a combination of both. So that's what I had learned when I talked to that particular tenant.
Okay.
Okay, I think, you know, I think I still have some concerns about the parking. Like, I feel like it's a little bit, um, not fully baked, I guess I could say. It's hard when, without tenants and specific program for all the buildings. I know it's difficult, but especially when it comes to like a daycare and then, you know, potentially a restaurant, it seems like it could get pretty messy. And I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, the architects and the engineers have really thought that through.
So if I may, Mr. Chairman, no, you bring up a very good, you bring up a very good point, and it has been a concern of Mr. Sharples. And frankly, we have seen small retail projects get completely dominated with parking by successful restaurants. No doubt about it, we have seen that. But we've also seen some very low-impact real estate offices or legal offices that have a very little parking demand. We've seen them in these facilities as well. What we tried to do is get a good understanding of the daycare facility. They do not appear to be a big parking generator. I think their staff was in the vicinity of around 20 people peak, if I'm not mistaken. I may be mistaken, I will confirm that for you. But that didn't really scare us. The concern about a restaurant is a good concern. We've actually taken that out of the narrative. We've actually communicated to Mr. Sharples that if a restaurant were to want to come in here, they would need to come back before the planning board. And you would be able to evaluate the parking needs, their seating, their size. And, you know, I think that's a fair comment. You know, we're representing a particular plan before you this evening. Of course, we'd like as much flexibility in leasing the building as we can, but we do know that there's some very intense parking users and they can completely dominate a site. And so right now, we've indicated that a restaurant use must come back to the planning board. That's not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, my third question hopefully is a quick one. And it's
Go ahead.
Actually specific to the, sorry, I'm jumping around quite a bit, but the, so I'm looking at these plans as a PDF, as a scan, I believe it's a scan of our copies that we received. And unfortunately, you know, I'd really like to review the planting plan specifically, and it's just not legible. I think, I think it's probably the scan more so than the applicant's submission, but it's just something that I was hoping that maybe we could look into for the next submission, how to get these PDFs to be more readable, because right now it's, I really can't make heads or tails out of what, what it's saying.
Okay. I would just add a couple of questions to the childcare parking area. Have you included the, have you anticipated the staff that will be there, the number of supervisors, teachers, aides, and adequate parking for them? And the other thing I'd like to ask you to do is just run us through how parents will come in and drop their children off, or how children will get into, into the daycare for that day.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did note in my notes that based on my conversation with the YMCA that, that they do have 40 employees, I stand corrected. Their students range around 153 students, their children, of course, they're not driving. That the parent drop-off is, I tried to indicate moments ago, was that through probably the main entrance into the center of the development. And in this location here, there's a door here, and there's also a door here, Mr. Chairman. And my recollection in the discussions with the Y was that, that both doors will be used, I guess, for different, different age groups. Both board doors will be used for, again, either parent drop-off or park and bring your child in.
Okay.
I can confirm that in advance of our next discussion, I'm happy to do that. But that's my recollection of the, of the discussion I have with them.
Thank you. All right, Dave, anybody else have their hand up?
Yeah, next in line is John Gruder.
Okay, John?
All right, can you hear me? All right, thank you. Hey, Jim, a follow-up on one of Jen's questions. If a restaurant expresses interest, and you said they'd come back to us to deal with the parking, where would that parking go? Where's a potential site for parking for a restaurant to add spaces?
There really isn't, sir. You know, they would either need to be of such a small size that they didn't need adequate parking, or frankly, they wouldn't come here, you know? Nobody's going to lease space for the rents that they will need to pay here if they don't have parking. And if they feel that there's enough parking, they can represent the, they can represent their seat count and their staff as they come back before the board and improve their case that there is enough parking. And by then, that building will be functioning and we would have actual data as to how the building works. But, you know, I think Mr. Monahan would love to put a restaurant in there, but he knows that it's limited, and he knows that, that they're not going to come here to create a problem. He doesn't want them there if they're going to create a problem. So we, that's why we offered to Mr. Sharples that if we do get to a condition of approval, that is, the restaurants, you know, would need to come back before the board, we're fine with that.
All right, then. Next, where is the outside play area for the daycare center? Is that that cutout?
I'm sorry, sir, if you can see the screen, it's located in the back, yeah. It's a fenced-in area. They have, they have square footage requirements by state law that they have to meet per children, and they provided those areas to us. I don't know what the number is off the top of my head.
Okay, and then, while we're on recreation areas, there's 224 apartments. I see this, the pool doesn't look real big, and then right to the, I'm looking at your picture on the screen right below that is a play area for the kids?
Yes.
Is there any other areas? I mean
Open space areas, you know, I think the, I think what we have been seeing on a lot of the more modern multifamily developments are things like gas fire pits and things like that, the notion of tennis courts and ball fields, I kind of think that's an older, an older notion for multifamily apartment.
No, I'm just looking for more green space. And where you have your little marker on there, there's a brown spot that looks like an infield.
That's a stormwater, that's a stormwater area, sir, yeah.
But there, any, any more grass area, you know?
No, we're, you know, we're 59% open space, but it's largely wooded. It's, it's not what I would consider active recreational space. It's, uh, it's, it's not what I would consider active recreational space. But, you know, I think that the modern apartment dwellers, I'm not sure they're looking for that. At least the, the apartment builders we're talking to, um, we don't see an awful lot of that anymore.
There's two, 200, and forgive me if this is written down, I forgot about it. 224 units, are they all two bedroom?
Um, one 68 are one bedroom, 56 are two bedroom. And there again, shows a tendency, whereas I can remember when I started in this business, multi-families were more three bedrooms than two bedrooms. And
Right.
Don't see a lot of that.
So there are no three bedrooms?
Correct.
Okay. Finally, uh, the rendering we have on the, I think the very last page, is, is that final? Is that subject to change or?
I don't, you know, I don't believe, I'm trying to find it for you. Where did it go?
Yeah, it shows the, the apartment building with, you know, blue and a gray color, I guess, and maybe a brick found the first floor.
Uh-oh, I think I lost it. I'm, I'm sorry, sir. What is your question? I, I may have lost it.
The, the look of the, the rendering we have that shows the, the, you know, the office building appears to be brick, nice looking building. And then the, uh, the apartments, a lot of blue and gray or white siding and maybe brick on the first floor.
Correct.
Right, so is, I, my question is, it looks like it's coming up on the screen. But is, is that it or is that subject to change again?
Here, we, you know, we think it's going to be along those lines. I'm not sure about the exact colors. But I think if you're asking, sir, about will that first floor be some sort of differing exterior material? I think the answer to that question is yes. Whether it's brick or stone or, or some type of material, yeah.
Which is more expensive? And that, the building, the office building is brick?
Yeah, I think we did
At least in the rendering?
We did provide elevations of all four sides of that building. We can try to share them the next time we get together.
We have them.
Okay.
But it appears, it appears to be brick, but I don't get to confirm that.
Yes, sir, the front half and the front sides, the front half of the building and the front sides of the building would be brick clad. And then the back is a differing material in back, that's
Right, right.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Dave, next?
Next up, Peter Steckler. If you've raised your hand and you're not, you're done, can you move it down? Because then I don't know if someone wants to speak again, thanks.
Peter? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I have a few questions and I'll just sort of lay them out and then maybe go back one by one. So you know the direction I'm heading. First, you know, the turtle issue that was talked about before. Second, I want to talk about the wildlife corridor and connectivity issue that was raised at, at the preliminary review of this project. And third, talk a little bit about wetland values. So first of all, regarding the turtles, um, I, I don't know if there are some lines crossed somewhere because on page 14 of 30 of the plan set that we received, we do have spotted turtles on, on that plan set. And, um, and that's a bit more what I'd expect from wood turtle, which generally doesn't occur too low in the coastal watershed. So, um, so anyway, I'd appreciate clarification on that. And given the lack of clarity, I would request, assuming that this project will be before us again, that we receive a copy of the Natural Heritage Bureau report so that we can have a better understanding of what's out there, given also the uncertainty about swamp white oak and, um, and, and that sort of thing. So I think that would be helpful if the applicant provided the, the Natural Heritage Bureau report for us to review. Second is around the wildlife corridor. And I brought this up during the preliminary review of the project. And I think I was pretty clear, even though as I look back at the, um, the meeting minutes from that meeting, that it doesn't reflect that I was really talking about east-west connectivity between, um, the, the town forest and, um, the New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Management Area. This is really the last, the area just to the south downhill of the mobile station is, is really the only remaining connected, um, segment along the Epping Road Corridor between this property and to, again, to move from east to west or west to east since wildlife move all over in both directions where they're provided the opportunity to. This is the last remaining spot. It's narrow, it's small, I, I acknowledge that. But it's the last remaining undeveloped spot on Epping Road with open space on both sides of the road. I encourage everybody to drive that and, and really keep your eye out for where there's actually tree cover on both sides of the road, uh, south of, south of 101. And this is the one way, um, where you find it. And just an interesting note that, uh, I almost got into a pileup accident here because this was a place where, um, I, you know, some deer ran out in the road. Just, I think it was last, I, I can't remember. It was after the preliminary review and I was like, yes, this is where wildlife are moving. And similarly, after, um, a, a big, big night event, the big vernal pool night event that happened, um, a month ago, this was the place where, uh, there were a lot of amphibians smashed across the road. So this is, this is, um, an important area from a connectivity standpoint. And I think that our, the residents of Exeter are coming to appreciate our town forest more and more, especially during this pandemic that we're in as it's being used harder and harder and the really critical habitat that it provides. And there's not, there's not much connectivity to the north of the, the town forest on the southern side of 101. There's not much connectivity, um, further to the east as you hit, um, New Fields Road and the Squam Scott River. You know, this is, this is the place to keep, um, the, the, uh, the town forest connected ecologically. So as species fade out and die, there's ability to recruit species back into the town forest area. So I feel pretty strongly about this. And I thought that Mr. Monahan really heard me when I, when I made this point and acknowledged the importance of this project addressing the needs of all community members, not just, um, human community members and that that was going to be revisited. So I think that there must have been some misunderstanding about what I was getting at there. But I just, I just wanted to really clarify the importance of, of that sort of last remaining bottleneck between, um, the Exeter Town Forest and the New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Management Area a little further to the west, south of Route 101. Finally, um, the wetland values. I heard Mr. Petropolis quote Mr. Quigley as saying that the wetlands on this site are low quality wetlands. You know, I, I, I guess I beg, I beg to differ. And I'd be interested in Mr. Quigley's assessment of that because given the conditional use permit that I've been reviewing, you know, it, it, it does not say that, um, in any way. It does say that the wetlands are forested, formed in poorly drained mineral soil and not directly associated with surface water, which limits or precludes many of the functions and values listed above. But it also goes on to note that, um, there are primary values around production, export, wildlife habitat, uh, which title the wildlife corridor, no sediment, toxic retention and nutrient removal. And I'd argue a whole host of other functions and values, um, uh, that we can, you know, we can dig into a little bit more, uh, once we get into the wetland conditional use permit. But, um, you know, so, so, so I just wanted to flag that. And, um, as, as someone who's familiar with wetlands myself, I've driven past this site for the last 15 years and just, um, often been so impressed with the microtopography on the, you know, the Epping Road frontage part of the site and observe the, um, you know, the various, uh, water level elevations of the wetlands, you know, uh, getting quite wet when it, during the wet seasons or when it's rained a lot and drying out. And, you know, the kind of habitat that provides across this site. I've always thought of it as a, as a pretty remarkable wetland resource. And, you know, as a result, the reason why this site has, has not been developed because, because of all those wetland resources. So I wanted to note that. And then one final question, which is, uh, is, is around the standing water body noted on the plan on the Epping Road frontage that's not going to be, um, filled. And I just, I just wanted to ask a pointed question about whether, um, there's been any vernal species, vernal pool species observed in that wetland, given, um, that Mr., I think it was Mr. Petropolis noted that there's no wetland outlet, um, there. And, um, the fact that it's got regular standing water could serve as, uh, you know, salamander, wood frog kind of habit. So I'd be curious about that since it wasn't, um, noted. So that's it for me. And if you want me to verify any of my questions, please let me know, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pete.
Thank you. Brendan, do you want to try to respond to a couple of the items brought up?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
The, uh, this, I was, as you were speaking, uh, looking into the, the turtle issue. And, and you're correct. And, um, that is why I remembered spotted turtle as well. In, in the course of our correspondence with, uh, Fish and Game, they actually requested that spotted turtle be the one, uh, the species added to the plan. They were more, more concerned that that was the likely, if any, um, species that was in that area. So that's what, that's why that made it, uh, onto the, the plan, uh, which was intended to be informational for, um, construction personnel primarily. That was actually not initially noted on the NHP. And I don't think, I don't see any problem with, um, that, that getting submitted. I could, I could submit that as an, to, uh, one of the CUP documents. As far as the corridor, uh, I guess, I guess I don't doubt that there's probably some, some movement, uh, east-west. Although there's, there's the develop, the housing development behind mobile, mobile and, uh, the dumpster place, um, with some backup there in addition to Epping Road. So in, in comparison to what, what I had talked to Kristen about, which made it into my subsequent, um, natural resources assessment, was the Bloody Brook Corridor, uh, north, north-south generally, which, which does have some, some issues, but which has some potential to be fixed as well. So I, I did not see a lot of, a lot of potential for, you know, moving, moving from the town forest, which actually lies quite a bit away and has several impediments between it. It's also, it also hasn't been identified, uh, in any of the available studies on that issue that I, that I've seen. And I, I did actually go looking for that in, uh, after, almost immediately after I had a senior comment and, uh, and back in October. And, um, I, I had assumed that you, that maybe there was a misunderstanding and that we were talking about, uh, the north-south connection, uh, under, under the highway. Perhaps that serves some more discussion. But, you know, I would also additionally point out that, that the Fish and Game land, in a sense, does extend all the way up to Epping Road. Uh, I believe it's, um, owned by the DOT, maybe Jim, Jim or someone can remind me. I believe it's owned by the DOT but managed by Fish and Game. And that's, that's that whole, that area next to it, which, um, leads right into Connor Farm. That will remain.
Yeah, so I guess just a, a quick reaction to that is, you know, that is in much closer proximity to the much higher traffic volume Route 101, the interchange, the lighted interchange. And, uh, well, I think it's lighted, um, but I guess I should check that. And the steep, the steep fill slopes as, um, Epping Road approaches 101, including guardrails, uh, which is a, you know, a known impediment to wildlife movement as well. So, you know, just to, just to note that. So, uh, and, and I do fully acknowledge that there is some additional development behind the, uh, the mobile station. But in terms of the, this is the only place where, uh, you have no development for a stretch of road along Epping Road, um, for wildlife to move east-west. And I think that's important, um, to maintain the ecological integrity of, of the town forest habitats.
If I may just add to that, sir, and then I'm going to ask Brendan, uh, to, to talk about vernal pools. But you talk about the frontage in the corridor and yes, we do have 700 feet of frontage. But across the way, a good half of that is, is developed. It's developed by a gas station and a Dunkin' Donuts and Cronin Road and a dumpster facility here. So that 350 feet of frontage, that does have connectivity, uh, across Epping Road. You are absolutely correct. But that 350 feet is quite similar to the, you know, the 350 or 400 feet that exist here. Yes, you do have slopes, yes, you do have highway, uh, and probably a wider road section. But, um, this entire frontage is, is, is not fully utilized on the other side of the street, I guess, is, is my point. So we, we, what you said earlier, we have a narrow corridor, we do. It's actually even narrower than our entire frontage, was my point. Brendan, do you want to ask, reply to vernal pool question?
Yeah, so we've, I have been, um, out looking at these wetlands on this property since around 2009, um, before it was logged even. And this was an area that always looked like it should be a vernal pool. And we're, we're, of course, we're, we're talking about, you can see in the photo up now, um, these are, these are generally taken in the spring leaf off, although it's been assisted by its, its, uh, being largely cut at this point. You can clearly see the water. It's, it's a semi-permanent water body, uh, in very dry portions of the year. It's nearly dry. The drought that we had in 2016, it was dry. So we've, I've looked at this several times. Now, the vernal pool study for the whole site, uh, was done in 2015. That's why when we identified all that, 10, 10 or so, yeah, 10, 10 pools. That's why when we identified all that, 10, 10 or so, yeah, 10, 10 pools in the back, not in this area. Before we submitted, before we got going on this proposal, we went back to check this, did not see any, any egg masses or anything with, that, that would be, be able to pick, be picked up with a dip net. And based on a similar experience to your right across the street, those two ponds, and I, and I don't know what these are, if they're natural or, or natural modified, I suspect. We had actually caught a bunch of catfish in that, in that pond across the street. So we had deployed some minnow traps in here and just caught gobs and gobs of predatory frogs, mostly, mostly like a green frogs and bullfrogs. So that is what we, we were thinking that that's probably why it's not, turned out to be a viable vernal pool breeding area.
So just to clarify, a distinction between a viable vernal pool breeding area and a vernal pool is not, is that, is that a legal distinction around the, uh, regu-, regulations around vernal pools?
Well, if there's no, if there's no evidence of breeding by indicator species, then I explain it that way, that's, was absent. So what I'm, I'm attempting to explain why something that other, otherwise looks morph, morphologically appropriate. In other words, there's a pool there, seems to have the right hydrology. And someone such as yourself would, would think, why isn't there vernal pool species there? So we took the extra step to try to identify why that was the case and make sure we weren't missing, missing anything. And the, a large amount of predatory frogs would, would explain that, much as it would in, you know, a lot of farm ponds, similar, similar types of small water bodies that, that may not have fish, but they more or less permanent hydrology. They, they're not, they're not suitable long-term breeding habitat. And I, I never found any egg masses in it. So supported on both, both fronts. But that, you know, nevertheless, it's, it's some of the only real well-inhabitat on the site. The majority of their property is, is more terrestrial. And, you know, of course, there is times a year when it, it has a more recognizable surface hydrology. That tends to happen more towards the back. You know, this area out front was, does have some well-in value that's really related to the water being there. And I think that is what Fishing Game had identified spotted turtle as potentially utilizing that area. And that's why that made it onto the plans at their request. And also I'd, I'd point out that although the, we are proposing development surrounding this, it, there, there will be a maintained connectivity to this portion of land that leads to the wildlife area in back. There's, there's no development along that northern edge in that area. Yeah, right there.
David, any more hands up?
Glenn English.
Okay, Glenn?
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick questions that I had prior to the conversation that just took place between Brendan and Peter, and one that just came to mind and I, Brendan, when you did the survey and looking for egg masses in the vernal, in the pools, is there, was there an impact as a result of the cutting of all the trees that could have affected the viability of those pools for creatures that you would normally see in a healthy vernal pool? You know, I don't know when you, when you actually were looking for egg masses, was that like within the last year or was that when the, shortly after the trees were cut and things were still trying to grow back?
Yes. So, guys, you might, got it. It was done shortly after the cutting. If I remember correctly, there, it was not complete at that time in 2015. You know, I'd say on, on balance, if, if anything, the, the cutting of the trees, it does two things. Generally, there'll be more water since there's less vegetation sucking water out of the ground, which is helpful for vernal pools. And second, without a, a tree canopy, where there are pools, they warm up very quickly. So I've, I've seen sites like this that it, it kind of tends to spread the vernal pool activity out. It actually helps it in a lot of ways. I had been to this site prior to it being cut and it wasn't a formal survey. It was more of a, you know, a site walk, but there, there was vernal pools back there. There always have been vernal pools in the back of the property. And it, it's possible that the, the tree cutting had maybe spread those out a little bit. But the, the basins that you can see pretty clearly in this photo, actually, they're, they're there regardless of the trees being there or not. Some of these areas might, as they grow in, become less suitable through just being choked with vegetation, especially the earlier, you know, the early successional growth. But if you're asking if it would have a negative effect, generally I, I don't think so. I've seen a few logged areas in the spring. And if anything, there tends to be more vernal pool activities than less.
Okay. Thank you. Um, oh, a quick response to Jen's question about the landscaping plans. Jen, I had Barb, we've had trouble with our printer and I had Barb send me a, a paper set for the plans and the lands, and it, it's pretty clear on that. So it must have been because of the scanning, if that, if that helps. I don't, I don't think it was because of the original plans. And then I have a question for Jim. Did I hear you correctly? Did you say that the YMCA childcare building would be the last building to be built? That's in phase three? But I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused because it sounds like they're the ones who have more or less, I don't, I don't want to say committed because I don't know that that's the case, but it sounds like they're pretty, pretty solid candidates for that building. And I'm just curious as to why that, as a result of that, that would be phase three?
Yes. That's a, that's a good question, Glenn. I think that my discussions, I'm trying to think back when Tom and I reviewed the, the phasing plan, I think it was felt that the, the apartments were going to be the dog that wags the tail here and that the focus was going to be to come out of the ground first with the, the vigor of the apartment buildings to perform the site work on the smaller area, in the commercial area. And I guess if marketing conditions warranted that the commercial building became super viable and, and, and ready to go, I guess Tom would go ahead and begin that. Tom, is that how you can see it? Tom can answer that question.
Yep. Hi, Tom Monahan, Roland Monahan. Really, really the intention is to do them all at the same time, Glenn. This is more, this is more done for financing purposes and, and the goal is, if, if, if we, we do come to a, an agreement, final agreement with the Y, that could very well be the first as well. But we had to set up a phasing plan for our financing. So, but, but it's really, the goal is really to start, to do them all at the same time. And the interesting thing with the Y is we've gone through a couple of executive directors in the last year. And, and so it sort of put us into a little state of flux as to if things have changed or not. And we've, we've had a letter of intent signed with them for a year. And, 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 you know, with things changing, you know, we sort of knew we were going to start with the apartments anyways. And so we put the commercial building last, but it very well could be the first, or at least done in parallel with the residential buildings. So again, just really for financing purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would like to just re, if I may, Glenn, just reinforce that one of the primary goals of these phasing plans was really to identify the accompanying site improvements that go along with each building so that staff really felt comfortable, not only David, but the building department, fire department, people understood exactly what areas of parking, what areas of access would be available for each of the three buildings. That was also an important element of the phasing plan.
Okay. Another question I had in looking at the ZBA report, they made a comment about public roads and private roads that it sounds like most of this would be a private road, but the, but the roads going to the office building and probably, probably the Y would be pub, would be, how did they classify it? Yeah. Those would not be private roads and I'm guessing taken over by the town and that was an issue that we would have to sort out on the planning board. Could you go over that a little bit?
Glenn, everything is proposed to be private.
It's all private. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. We, we did that dance with Unitail, if you remember.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure. I, I just saw that in the ZBA notes and I wasn't sure if that had been changed or what had happened with that.
Private, correct. Thank you.
Okay. And then I, I'll just ask one other quick question. I always worry when I see as much parking. I know you've cut back on what is technically required and that's a good thing. I think we still have some reviewing of that to do, but had you, had you considered underground parking on and under any of these buildings?
Tom is, is nodding yes. And to be truthful, the, the cost of the podium parking, as it's called, was excessive. It would have, it would have really hurt the ability for Tom to bring these units in on the rents that, that they're hoping for, for the workforce housing piece. So it was definitely looked at and it just, it, it wasn't financially viable, given the, the commitment to the workforce housing piece. We see podium parking on kind of the higher end open market units, but, yeah, it just didn't work here.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you for your answers. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Glenn.
Jen Martell has her hand up again?
Yes, I just had one question regarding the parking as well for Mr. Petropolis, or actually kind of regarding circulation of facilities equipment, so things like, I was wondering if you could kind of point out how trash is going to be dealt with and, and then also like move in, move out. We know where the moving trucks go and bring the furniture in and all of that for these, for, basically for all four buildings.
Sure. So we provided some, some pretty good turning radiuses at our entrance in our internal intersections. And the reason we did that was to, was to route a Exeter fire apparatus vehicle through the entire project. In fact, we, we performed those turning movement plans and provided that to the fire department as part of their review. So we feel comfortable that if a fire apparatus can negotiate its way around the site, certainly a, a front loader type dumpster vehicle could do that. Moving vehicles, we don't see the semis as much on projects anymore. We see more of the, what we call a panel box truck or a U-Haul truck. And they're fairly conventional in size. We, we, we have not designated any moving spaces per se, but we think that happens to be more of the trend. With regards to dumpsters, we have dumpsters located here for basically this facility, dumpster and recycling, dumpster and recycling here. In this particular one, dumpster and recycling primarily for the commercial buildings. And we see access in this manner where they would come in, front load, pick up and go. In this location, they could come in, front load, pick up and go. And then in this location, they could also pick up, I think there's an angle dock here that they could pick up and then go. So we have taken that into consideration in terms of turning movements throughout the site.
I think, I think a moving truck is definitely something that should be considered because right now it seems like there's really no place like near a door that a moving truck could stop and park. I mean, are you saying they would just park in a parking space and unload people's furniture and just go through the front door?
Yeah, they may take two if it's available, but you, you bring up a good point. We'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I think there's just, it just seems to me like, you know, these buildings are just like, there's, you know, every square inch of available parking is being taken up to get your parking counts and the parking counts are still very low. And I wonder if they're feasible and, you know, yet some of these things, like I'm just trying to think it through, like if I lived here and I got to tell the moving guy where to park, like where does he go? You know, you can't just like hope that a couple of spots are empty in front of the building. They can't take, the handicap spots, obviously, which are the ones closest to the front doors. So things, things like that, just to consider in the site plan, I think would be important.
That's fine.
But you must have other projects you've worked with to see how they work.
We, we have seen some designated, I won't lie to you, sir, we have seen designated spaces. They generally are in almost the dumpster areas as well. It's kind of a dual use there, assuming that there wouldn't be a moving on a, a day that the dumpsters were being picked up. But, and we have seen other projects with, without a designated space. So we'll, we'll take another look at that.
Good. Uh, Dave, anybody else with a hand up?
No, there's, there is one attendee, they're still there, just, you know, if they wish to speak, don't have their hand up, if they wish to speak, put it up. But otherwise, no, no panelists with their hands up.
Well, seeing that the hour is almost nine o'clock, I would like to have a, spend a little time talking about these waivers so that Jim and others can get a hand on, on where we're at, where the board is at or thinking about. And he suggested that a little earlier, so I'd like to suggest we move to that now and we'll hit that for probably half an hour or so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's, that's nice of you. There, Dave, Dave is correct, there are eight waivers and there's a handful that are fairly straightforward and ones you've seen before. And there are others that will likely And there are others that will likely merit some additional discussion. So I recognize that. What I'd like to suggest doing, Dave, in his, in his preparation memo for the meeting is outline seven, seven of the waivers. There was a last minute add-on for granite curbing that I'll talk about, I'll talk about in a minute. I have prepared a formal letter that was originally dated in November of 19, but most recently dated May 25 of 2020, where I go into much greater detail, Mr. Chairman, of, of the, I, I go into much greater detail, Mr. Chairman, of, of not only each waiver, but how, how we believe we comply with the, the standards under Site Plan Section 13.7, 13.7. What I'll do, because time is a consideration, I'll likely paraphrase each waiver. I'll stop at the end of each one, Mr. Chairman, if, if, if you want to ask any questions or if you'd like me to peel through all eight, I'm happy to do that. But what is your preference?
Well, I, I, we all have, I believe, copies of seven of the waivers.
Okay.
So go ahead and give, yeah, I, let's do the overview and if there are any concerns you think you might have, we'll try to get those identified.
Lang, just, Lang, before we start, before we start, Pete has his real hand up on the screen. I think he wants to talk.
Okay. If you hold him, let's see what Pete has to say. His comment.
You gotta unmute yourself, Pete. Can't hear you.
Details.
You have to hit unmute. You have to hit the mute button.
What is the traffic sta, the status of the traffic study? I seem to have lost sound.
We, we hear you now. Can you hear me?
I can, I can answer that, Pete. The, it's in the works. It's, we've been meeting Paul Vlas, it's the town engineer, myself, and the two engineers, Jason Plord and Greg Backus from VHB, have been meeting weekly to discuss it. We had the meeting today. They're probably about a week away, they told me, from, you know, submitting something in writing for us. So I will have it for you in time for the, for the next meeting. You gotta mute, you gotta mute button.
Unmute again, Pete. Now, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Do we, David, do we have anything from the applicant in the way of a traffic study?
We do. They submitted a traffic study when, when they first submitted. The TRC felt that the scope was not, didn't encompass all of the inspections, the length that we, we felt the scope was inadequate. And, and then we got VHB involved and they agreed with that assessment and, and were expanding the scope of that study.
So right now we, we don't have any traffic study from the applicant.
No, we do. I can, I can get you that.
Well, yes, but if it's, if it is largely going to be overridden by the, the larger study, I'm, I'm just curious as to how the traffic that's going to be merged onto Epping Road is, is actually going to be analyzed.
That's what Mr. Purna did, a traffic impact analysis, did, did, you know, the way you do a traffic impact analysis, the issue that we raised was that we felt that it should include the Route 101 interchange because you're putting a lot of cars during peak hour to that Route 101 exchange. I forget the numbers, but over a couple hundred, I believe. So we felt that the scope needed to be expanded and VHB is doing that.
Okay, so it's, it's a stay tuned.
Correct.
Thank you. If I might, and I think the, the, you have to Department of Dot needs to be involved somehow. We're talking about a major highway and they are, are connected access roads and 27 coming down off the ramp is still a connect, is a, is that meets that, that category, I believe. So I think that's the missing link. We need to know what's going to happen and the state has, because they're state-run and operated roadways, they need to be involved and, and then our folks in VHD should probably be a part of that conversation along with the developers. I think that's what we need to have happen so we can get a broader picture and everybody's on the same page, just what you're saying, Pete.
Yeah, that's our intent and that's been our discussions and that's how we see the review moving forward.
However, I do need to jump in here, David, and say in fairness to us, we did prepare a study, we did evaluate the project back there in January. It then moved into a, a little bit different arena where the selectmen and the at-town meeting vote said, you know what, we need a bigger study than just the front door of this project. We need the corridor study. And that funding was made available and I guess, Mr. Chairman, where we miscalculated is we thought the corridor study was going to look at access points for property. It was going to look at traffic, it was going to look at development and include those elements. And that's where I guess we, I erred in assuming that, that corridor study was going to do that. And then in discussions with David recently, he's saying, no, you guys need to, to move forward with, with your project independently from the corridor study. Okay, fine. We'll, we'll go do that with the state. We're, we're fine with that.
That's, that's not exactly correct. Let me, let me clarify that because first, the, the, when the traffic, when we scoped out the traffic, I requested before TRC, before the traffic impact analysis was even done, I asked it to include the Route 101 interchange. When we got it, it did not. Then the corridor study came from myself and Economic Development Director and we figured out how, how do we, how do we look at that Route 101 exchange? It wasn't at the select board, it was from, it was from us and then we brought it to the select board. So just for clarification on that, it's all been along our goal is to have DOT review because we feel as though this is going to have an impact on their, their right-of-way. Their right-of-way ends at Cronin Road, which the initial study ended. That's where, they ended right where the urban compact begins and state jurisdiction, you know, ends and begins. So we felt that it's, it's important to look at the, and then internally, I worked with the Economic Development Director, how do we, how do we do that? How do we look at the Route 1 interchange? Because we have to look at this corridor holistically as a big approach. So it was our goal to do that on, on behalf, not necessarily for this development, but for this development and other development in the corridor. So we kind of holistically planned this corridor. So development, and we have a roadway that can accommodate those, that potential future development of the score.
And that's fine, Dave. I, I don't disagree with what you just said. It's just, it was certainly not our intent to, to keep anybody out of a review. That's all. And, and we'll, we'll, we'll move forward with that.
Okay, anything else, Pete?
I had a lot, but let's go on.
Okay, let's move then back to waivers and Jim was going to start that discussion.
Hey, thank you, sir. Again, a total of eight. We, we've prepared six of those, two of those waivers were prepared by our project attorney. The first waiver, the first waiver is your section 7.5.4. This is one that I think you're familiar with, Mr. Chairman. Your regulations require a high intensity soil survey. And we typically provide site-specific soils mapping, which are essentially the same. They, they classify the soils onsite. Actually, site-specific soils mapping are a more detailed representation. So we, we think we've kind of exceeded the HIS, the HIS criteria. And the reason we do that is because the site-specific soils criteria is what's accepted at the state level for the alteration of terrain permitting. So we're seeking, we're seeking relief of section 7.5.4, to use site-specific versus high intensity soils mapping. The second request that we have made is under your section 9.7.5.5, that requires landscape islands to be provided in parking stalls every 10 to 15 feet. We are exceeding that in a number of locations throughout the project. The, the, the reason we're seeking a waiver request is, again, and I'm paraphrasing, is that our, our proposed plan really has tried to balance defining traffic movements through the facility, through the site, as well as providing some breakup of some paved areas. And we think we've, we've done a good job of doing that in some of the larger parking areas on the end caps. For instance, this row, I think, gives 21 spaces where your code says between 10 and 15 spaces. So you seek additional islands and we're, we're thinking our plan is, is fairly balanced. Again, we have 59 total open space percent here of the, of the entire piece, not internally, but of the entire piece. And so we were seeking relief from that particular waiver. Number three is a waiver of section 9.9.2, which requires a waiver to, to work within 75-foot buffer from poorly drained soils. As you know, the project proposes to impact wetlands within the project, 2.9 acres of wetlands, and so the subsequent buffers are being impacted as well. Waiver request number three is almost identical, Mr. Chairman, to the conditional use wetland permit in terms of the material we submitted. We did a functions and values analysis, Brendan did function and values assessment. We looked at the entire bodies and we are seeking relief as not only a waiver, but waiver, that particular waiver is also consistent with our conditional use permit request. It requires Conservation Commission input. We have received a favorable recommendation from them. I think they believe that the, the conveyance of the back 43 acres of land outweighed the impacts to the wetlands within the front part of this particular site. And that is in our mitigation proposal. Again, it's the 43 acres, but it's also about $176,000 to the state of New Hampshire under their Aquatics Resource Mitigation Fund, ARM Fund. The next waiver, number four, has to do with the commercial building where your code requires five loading docks for a building of this size. You know, five loading docks for a, a building that intends to have a daycare facility and, and an office space and, and some retail space. It, it, it's more of an industrial criteria really than it is a, a commercial criteria. In this modern day, we're, we're seeing mostly for a facility like this, we're seeing mostly UPS or FedEx-type trucks for deliveries. Amazon with e-commerce does a lot of deliveries to small offices and retail spaces. We've identified a delivery vehicle parking space in this location here, as we have in, in the other locations in, within the parking lot. So our waiver request is to, is to not to provide, try to define 12-foot by 50-foot of five loading dock spaces for this facility. Waiver number five, sir, is the parking waiver that we touched upon briefly during the presentation. Your section 9.1.1, 9.13.1 requires 538 spaces. We're providing for 20. Our waiver request is, you know, several pages of, a couple pages of criteria and how we came about asking for this. It does include the, the parking occupancy rate space table that I alluded to with Ms. Martell's question earlier. And so we're, we're happy to talk to greater length about that. You know, the results are that we believe that the shared parking, that 420 spaces will satisfy our peak and that, you know, we have benefits of less pavement, less storm water and of course more, more open space. Waiver item six is the newest waiver request. Under section 9.7.5.6, it requires private sites to use granite curbing for all traffic control and planting islands. We have almost 7,200 feet of curbing, Mr. Chairman, on this, on this project, a lot of curbing. 77% of it is concrete and granite. We use concrete where we have sidewalk up against curb and we use granite in all the heavily trafficked areas as well as the landscape islands. Where we're seeking relief, and it's essentially, it's relief for, you know, trying to value engineer, some of the elements of this project is along the outer perimeter of these parking areas to use Cape Cod burn, Batuminous curbing, which is a proven product and it, it represents about 23% of the total curbing. And so we're seeking, we're seeking relief of that. That has been granted on a couple of other projects in Garrison Glen. I know they're more commercial in nature and more industrial in nature, I get that. But we think we have a fairly judicious use of curbing and we actually think we meet the, the letter of the law by having it at, at traffic control points in, in planting islands. The last two waivers have to do with recreational space and I will, I will send you to, I will send you to the May 11th letter from the law firm of Welles White and Fontaine because they, they combined the rec space waiver with also an impact fee waiver. And I know the hour's getting late, Mr. Chairman, so let me just quickly touch upon it. If there's detailed questions, I think a couple of the attorneys are with us tonight. But the rec space waiver requires, you know, I think 400 square feet per multifamily residential unit. And that is almost like 90,000 square feet of recreation space. We talked earlier about what we're providing for the project and so we, we're seeking relief from that particular, that particular item. I would be ridiculous if I didn't, you know, if I didn't continue to indicate to you that the, oops, I'm over on Skivv here, that the, the 43 acres of land that's being conveyed for preservation is, is, is land that could be used for passive, for passive use for people, not only here, but also people walking in the town land just to, to walk through, walk through the property. So there's a rec space waiver and then there's an impact fee waiver, which is fairly significant. And I would suggest you probably take a look at the, the impact fee waiver in a little bit greater, greater detail than just my overview because it speaks to impacts for things like rec fees, but also other impacts. So that's the overview, Mr. Chairman, of, of the eight waivers that this project proposes.
Thank you. Do any of the board members have any comments about any of the waivers? I know we've looked at them quickly, but no. Have any heads up or specific concerns that any of the board members may have?
Jen Martel has her hand up.
Okay, Jen?
Um, yeah, I was just going to ask, I don't know if it was provided with the, with the new waiver, but the curbing one, I was wondering if we could get for the next meeting, like a diagram or something that shows specifically concrete versus granite versus asphalt so we can evaluate it a little bit easier?
More sense of location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be, be fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Pete Steckler.
Okay. Pete?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to note the UEI letter dated March 13th, 2020. twenty, and that they, at that point, they did not recommend granting waivers for the loading spaces, the number of parking spaces, and the recreational space. Um, are we expecting to get, and I, I, I see that, I'm swimming in paper here, that, um, Mr. Petropoulos, um, respond, I think responded on March nineteenth, which I haven't gotten all the way through, but will we get a updated, um, letter from UEI for, for the next time we meet and talk about this project? You know, addressing, to say whether their concerns have been addressed and whether they, um, don't object at that point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any others from the public, Dave? Oh, got two more with the hands. Jane, you got your hand up again?
Nancy Belanger has her hand up, and then John Gruder.
Okay, Nancy?
Hi, I, I just wanna ask more of a clarification. There is a few memos in there from our Conservation Commission, and they're talking about, um, the, it has to do with the recreation space and the public access to the forty-five acres or whatever open for those forty-three acres. And there was some back and forth about access to that area and the public parking area. Um, and I know Kristen's on still. Are we gonna have an answer, or will Conservation have more clarification on this by our next meeting? Um, and the reason I'm asking is, we're looking, they're looking for a recreation space, and they're saying, well, they can use that back acreage, but if people can't access it, or the public has limited access, I have a little bit of an issue with that. Thank you.
Yeah. Kristen, any comment?
Yeah, sure. So at the last Conservation Commission, Commission meeting, we met and discussed that in particular because at prior meetings, there was some concern that allowing public use on that conservation land could, um, reduce the habitat quality of the area that we're trying to protect. So, um, there was discussion back and forth, um, on the twel- the May twelfth meeting. Um, and in general, the Commission said, you know, there might be some potential for some very limited recreation use on the property, some limited level of very, of passive recreation, not mechanized, so no mountain bikes, foot traffic only type of thing. But they wanted to defer a final decision until, um, members had an opportunity to walk the property. And we did have, um, three members walk the property on May twentieth, May twentieth. So that will be a discussion point for, um, for when we meet at the next Conservation Commission meeting in June.
Okay.
So I hope to have some res- resolution there and some more detail. Um, at this point, what they had said at the last meeting was they would consider some limited level of passive recreation.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Chair?
Certainly.
Okay, so Kristen, when are you meeting again? Is it within the next few weeks, or, so, the other thing was that, one of the memos, one of the Conservation Commission memos was the first one, what's the date? I'm sorry, I had it on my other screen and I've lost it. Said that they were, oh, I know, right? Trying to use two screens here and zoom, um, that you were okay with excluding trail parking, but then your second meeting or memo said you'd consider limited, but there was no comment about the trail parking. So I guess what I'm looking for is, are you going to meet before we meet again on this?
Yeah, so, uh, June ninth, I believe, is the next, yeah, June ninth is the next Conservation Commission meeting. Uh, that was another point of discussion. The location where the proposed parking area is now had wetland buffer impacts, and so members expressed concern about that. Um, we did look at the area, um, at the, the plan's upside down, but, um, I need north orientation, I guess, in my head, but on the bottom right corner of the lot, seems like there is some potential there, but again, you know, this is just, um, we need full board discussion before I can really tell you. Um, but it sounds like, I think the plan is to not have applicants come to their next meeting, um, so we should be able to meet with the Commission before your next planning board meeting discussion.
Thank you very much.
Uh, could I ask a question relating to that? I, I, again, we're buried in paper. It seems to me that the property abuts Continental Drive somewhere. And if that's the case, is that a possible? Yeah, it's kind of across from, uh, whatever that is, that's, uh, well, across from Webb and, uh, soon to become Unitil, or what is Unitil? That's quite a project there. So my dumb mind says, hmm, might there be an access point slash a little parking area for access there? And I don't know what the conversation has been with the Con- Conservation Commission, but I would encourage them to think about that a little bit. And may solve that problem.
I can weigh in a little bit. Um, there is a pretty steep embankment, so, um, just, uh, south, but at the top of your screen is the Edmund, I think it's Edmunds Conservation Easement. Um, so, so that is also a conservation area. It is very wet, um, both on the Continental Drive and as well as the junction where the properties share a boundary. And then the Continental, or I guess Energy Way, um, access point is also fairly steep, um, for the majority of that area, so, um, I don't know that that would be a viable option, um, but it's certainly something we can discuss. I know Brendan was eager for the Commission to identify if, if they were supportive of providing limited passive recreation, where would that be? Or would it look something similar to eighty Epping Road where we just have trails available for the residents, um, using the site? But the Commission hasn't discussed that, so, uh, you know, time will tell.
Okay, uh, who else do we have? Oh, we had, uh, John Gruder, I think.
Yes, you did.
Well, good, Mr. Chairman.
My question's on the impact fees. Uh, what's the justification for us waiving those fees? Why, why are you asking for that?
Okay, so let me, I can't see, uh, let me get out of this for a second. I'm trying to understand who, who's on our call here.
John Gruder.
No, I know that, John. I'm wondering on my team, um, you know, I, the, no, that's not it, sorry. The, uh, I'm sorry, John, for...
Sorry.
Uh, is Attorney Leonard on the phone call? I don't know if he's still on. Okay, so I think, I think the, the short answer, sir, from the project engineer, who's, who's just trying to keep things moving, the short answer here is, I think, just for the workforce housing component of this thing, to try to keep the overall costs in, in line, uh, to be able to deliver of, you know, affordable housing to those workforce units. That's my quick answer. I, I think that there's a summary, uh, and if, and I think it probably warrants a, a good read of that particular letter to, to understand the real reasoning, but that's kind of the quick, the nine twenty-three on the call, uh, answer.
And you're looking for a, a, a full, not a partial?
Okay, so Mr. Monahan's creeping up. He's gonna, he's gonna respond if he can.
Yeah, um, really, i- it's, it's all about the workforce housing, the fifty-six units, uh, that, that, again, trying to keep the cost down. Uh, that, at the end of the day, that's the request to, to get a, a waiver at, on the fifty, on, on the workforce housing units.
So it's, it's just on those fifty-six units?
That, that's the end result, yes.
Oh, okay.
So it's not, but that is not what it says.
Oh, Jim, sorry, this is, uh, Dave Tenza here, too. I can chime in if you, if it's okay.
Sure, yeah, please.
So, and I, I think my understanding, Attorney Leonard, um, could, could elaborate more on this than I think he has in, in the letter. Um, the, we are asking for a waiver of the full impact fee. Um, of large reason we are asking for that is because of the, uh, grant of land that, uh, Mr. Monahan's gonna be, uh, giving the town, uh, which, very frankly, the, the cost of, of that land, the value of that land far exceeds, um, what the impact fees would be, um, both in, uh, purpose of...
This is, this is where I thought you were gonna go, but then I just heard we might not be able to access that land, so not sure it offsets any, and there's not a recreational benefit, it appears.
And so I think that, that's, um, well, I, part of the other benefit to the town is that it merges, um, this land with other, uh, town-owned land, from my understanding, and, um, as far as access, that's something someone else would have to answer, but we are seeking a full, full waiver of the impact fee.
Full, full waiver for all two hundred and whatever, twenty-four units?
Y- yes.
Cause there's not a lot of, you know, I talked earlier asking about now what we had available for recreation, and there's not a lot being offered by the, uh, by the developer, and, which may mean we're gonna be taxing, you know, town amenities, and you don't wanna pay for any of it. What, David, what's, what is the, what is the impact fee per, per unit? Any idea?
Calling back.
All right. What would the impact fee on one of those units be? Dave, did you hear me? Does anyone else know? I, I just forget what it is.
He's muted. Oh, there he is.
He froze, and I just had to reboot, so I just missed...
What is the impact fee per unit of, on that property? For recreation?
Uh, I'd have to, I don't have the impact fee application. It's usually handled at the building permit. They fill it as part of it. I, I don't have a copy of it on me. Um, I'm sure they probably have that in, they must have the application for it. There's, there's different levels depending on what type of unit it is, if it's a multi-
Right.
If it's a single family, you know, three bedroom, uh, so forth. It's in the hundreds.
Yeah, I think we need to know that number before I voted on a waiving it.
Oh, absolutely, I, yeah.
Well, that's something we need to...
I could, I could address some of that, Mr. Chairman, Mark Fugier.
Mark's with our team, Mr. Chairman. He'd like to respond.
So the impact fee, the impact fee for recreation, uh, Mr. Chairman, is seven hundred and eleven dollars per unit. So the total for the project would be a hundred and fifty-nine, uh, dollars. Um, you know, the, as, as stated, that the waiver request is tied to the fact of the significant donation that's being made on the open space next door to the site. Um, obviously, there's, there's access points from adjoining properties and possibly from Energy Way that can be confirmed, um, or an easement could be provided, obviously, from the parking lot. Um, but that's the reason for the waiver, uh, because of the adjoining open space and the recreation opportunities that are being provided there. I should also point out that in your impact fee ordinance is also a waiver provision for lots of record. Uh, these records, these two lots that are being developed actually date back to the sixties, prior to the ordinance, ordinance being adopted. Um, that provision is section eleven point seven point four, uh, in your impact fee ordinance. Uh, so that's another qualifying, um, uh, provision that might be available, uh, to us also. Um, and I also should point out that the impact fee, uh, calculation for recreation, Mr. Chairman, is rather old. It's two thousand and three, um, it's dated, so I'm wondering, um, technically, how viable those fees are, given, uh, the statutory requirements around impact fees. Uh, capital improvements plans are, are typically in a six-year timeframe. Um, having an impact fee that hasn't been looked at or updated in seventeen years is, is, um, pretty old. Those are my comments.
Just to address that, I mean, there was a two thousand and nine update of the rec impact fees, but we haven't found any record that it was adopted. Um, so, and, and Bruce Mayberry, we've hired Bruce Mayberry to, uh, do, he's doing it right now. He has the information, we provided it, uh, so if there's, you know, uh, less of a charge, I think I'd be happy, you know, I was gonna craft a condition of approval to that effect to give the updated numbers, based on that outcome of that study.
Well, if there are existing connections to other town trails on that property, it would be helpful for us to know that next time around, if you can somehow identify those, uh, access points. We know the trails all over the place, but...
And if there's gonna be a trailhead, you're gonna have to adjust your parking.
Yes.
Or account for that, sir.
But there's trails all over the place, you know? So anyway, if there are some viable trails, it'll be nice to know.
Just to clarify, there are no tri- no existing trails right now between, um, the proposed mitigation parcel, uh, and the liberal conservation area.
Thank you, Kristen. Okay, I think that we've pretty much run out our gamut here, and I don't know if there's any other questions that any of the board meet, need, and board has, or anybody on the public that they may be able to identify. Uh, so I think we need to, uh, consider, uh, publicly tabling this till a date certain. We know there's a, a need to get going because there's some deadline in June, and I'm very curious as to whether, where all other federal deadlines seem to have been changed, has this deadline been changed? So that was a question I would pose to the developers, if they've checked that out. There's not a whole lot of time with the, this methodology of meeting, and not a whole lot of time in getting things done between now and the end of June, because June is here, believe it or not. So I would, uh, we'll do the best we can to meet that, but I'm not, I can guarantee that. So this seems to me a Plan B, C, or D, that someone needs to check with the powers that be and see if there is an extended deadline, or if there is a way in which you could apply for an extended deadline. Just, uh, trying to think ahead a little bit for everybody in this process.
If I may, Dave, do you have any suggestions as to what?
Mr. Monahan was ready to address that.
Oh, okay.
First of all, thank you very much for bringing it up, and, and certainly in these trying times, uh, we've experienced, uh, the calendar, uh, changing right in front of us, and, um, we, our financing, uh, we hope our financing is gonna be with New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. And, um, you know, we have been talking, uh, we have been going, conversing with them back and forth, um, uh, but right now, there has been no, uh, no, uh, timeline change, uh, with respect to the financing. Uh, they, they actually have the, the, the money set aside from this year's budget and it goes, it rolls over to the next year. It could pose a problem. Um, there was some talk of, of, of trying to, to, to take it into July, but, uh, we have, I have not heard the final answer, uh, yet. Um, you know, I would hope it would because everything else has been delayed, uh, for a couple of months, and, um, I hope that they look favorably at it, but as of yet have not received a response from, uh, New Hampshire Housing. Frank, the, the one response I did meet, I did receive from them- Frank, the, the one response I did meet, I did receive from them is they, they actually do, do not have a meeting scheduled for July, but they are reconsidering, um, you know, it's almost, it's, it's sort of, uh, the governor and the executive council will have to get involved, uh, in, in something, uh, like this. So, um, right now, it, it, it is June, uh, the end of June, uh, but, uh, we, we're trying our hardest to extend it out and, and we thank the, the planning board for considering, uh, and, you know, expediting this. And it's a very difficult time for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. So Dave, uh, on our plan of, that we started in our last meeting is to, because of the technology of the outs, is to basically skip a meeting and my calendar says that we would table till June, uh, let's see, our meetings are the eleventh and twenty-fifth. Is that correct? And our agenda's full for the eleventh?
Well, I mean, it has the, uh, yield plan application that got a lot of interest and got a lot of discussion. And I, you know, I, I, I don't know, I'll, I'll look direction from the board, but I'm assuming that's gonna be the case again, uh, on the eleventh. Uh, but whatever you table it to, whatever date you table it to, you know, staff will do our best to be, you know, to be ready. So whatever the board's comfortable with, I know you had a discussion among the board when we did a dry, uh, Zoom run there and you wanted to keep the meeting separate, like second meeting of the month goes to the second meeting of the month and so forth. And the first meeting of the month, you know, so they, they don't like cross-pollinate, uh, but that's, I'll leave that up to the board. Whatever you'd like to do, uh, we'll get prepared for.
Okay. So, uh, can we go back to the full screen? Jim?
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Thank you. There we go. So my question now is to the board, do you have any preference as to whether we continue this meeting on the eleventh after, that would be after the, is that meeting? Or so we have two meet, two, two cases on the agenda? Or do you feel we need to wait, um, till the end of June, actually, because this is the end of March, I mean, May? I don't know if there's any, any thoughts you people have, or do you like?
Are we gonna have all the information we need by the, the closest meeting, June eleventh, you said?
Well, that's, that's two weeks. I mean, excuse me.
No, packets, packets will need to be sent out, uh, by Thursday, Thursday.
This coming Thursday?
This, yeah, I mean, it's.
And are we gonna have the, uh, traffic study by then?
Uh, I, you know, I mean, we're, we're trying. Um, I, I can't, I don't have a firm date yet, though.
Okay, well, okay, cause I'm, I'm not prepared to go forward until we have that study.
Understood. That's, I, I agree with you. Um, I just don't know. I don't have.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make your life any more difficult. All I'm doing is saying, saying that I, as an individual board member, am not prepared to go forward with this until we have that study. And a chance to look at it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Tom just, uh, kicked me, if, if I may, he just kicked me in the leg and said, you know, let's, let's move to the twenty-fourth.
Well, it would be the twenty-fifth, actually.
Oh, is that the date? I'm sorry, twenty-fifth, yeah.
Okay.
You know, it, it keeps, it keeps in line with what you've got. We've got a little bit of work to do. It gives some time for the traffic study and, uh, we, we, we hope we'll be better prepared for a motion on the twenty-fifth than maybe the eleventh. So I, I, I hope that helps.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So, uh, chairman is looking for a motion to table case number, whatever it is here. Table both of them?
Before, before you do that, uh, I mean, I just see a couple of hands still up. I, maybe they're just old hands up, but John Gruder, Mark Fugier, and Jen Martell, all of them have their hands up. Do you still wanna speak or is that from an old one? Oh, they all disappeared.
That is an old hand, but it's.
Okay, forget I said anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, you're checking, correct, so checking. So, uh, a motion to, uh, table case number nineteen dash fifteen and case number nineteen dash sixteen to seven PM on the meeting, the extra planning board meeting of June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty. I'll move that. I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing now, I'm gonna call for the vote. So Gwen, how will you vote?
I vote aye.
And John?
Aye.
Molly?
Aye.
Pete? Cam?
Me, aye.
Uh, Pete Steckler?
Aye.
Steckler, and Jen Martell, one, two?
Aye.
And I vote aye, so motion carries. Thank you very much for everybody's attention. And let's see now, my agenda's here somewhere.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we know this is a challenge, um, and, uh, we, we greatly, we greatly appreciate the attention. It's hard to focus for that long. Uh, I'm gonna have a beer right now. Maybe a time I can convince Tom to have one. So, uh, I wish you all, uh, uh, safety and health and we'll, we'll, we'll talk to you in a few weeks.
I would like to send my appreciation to Mr. Monahan for allowing us to do a little sidewalk. I was out there. I didn't bump in, bump into anybody, but a lot of those Martins have been shot up with, 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 uh, shotguns, so.
Oh, wow.
They've been there for a while, but anyway. It was a, it was a nice, a nice, uh, walk that I had through there. Very similar property throughout, I, you know. We've seen it before. Darren, Darren had arranged for a walk, I'm on two back. Okay, um, thank you very much and we'll see you folks on the twenty-fifth. And, uh, is there any other business that, uh, any planning, uh, department articles or anything, um, for you, Dave?
I mean, a relevant topic, I just wanted, uh, that came up, I, I met with, uh, did an orientation with the UNH fellow. I think I might have mentioned this, more in the sustainability vein in the advisory committee, but we're doing a greenhouse gas emissions inventory to, um, on our municipal operations this summer to determine a baseline in twenty nineteen and then set, uh, you know, carbon emission reduction targets, uh, in the years to come. And, you know, how, and strategies on how to, uh, how to achieve those targets. You know, how some, a lot of communities have reduced our emissions by X by, you know, twenty thirty or what have you. So we're gonna create that. I, I, I spent a little, uh, Zoom orientation, which was, it was, it was pretty fun, I must admit. It was, uh, at first, for a four-hour Zoom meeting, but they, they did it pretty well. Uh, I met our fellow. She, she's, she seems very smart, very motivated. So we'll have her on board to do a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. I mean, it'll affect planning, it'll affect the whole thing. I just thought I'd mention that. She starts on Monday. Unfortunately, she's not in the office on Monday. She's got to, uh, you know, we're working remotely, uh, UNH is working remotely. So, uh, it'll, we'll have to deal with it that way, but that's, I think that's, you know, good news I wanted to share, uh, that we'll have an intern on board, uh, doing that study come Monday.
Great. That's exciting. I think, yeah. Any other comments from the good of the order? Jen?
I, I just wanted to follow up on, and I feel bad that I, you know, raised this issue in front of the applicant. Um, not that I was blaming them in any way, but the, the quality of the scans that we're receiving is PDFs. Um, I feel like we really need to look into that, like, like most of what I received unfortunately is not legible. And I know I can request paper copies, but I'm trying to avoid the paper copies. Um, and I think that the, the cost that the town is saving in not having to mail me this giant envelope every two weeks go toward, you know, talking to IT and figuring out how we can get better quality PDFs. I know that the applicants are submitting quality PDFs, um, to, that are coming right out of their CAD programs that are probably crystal clear. I think the problem has to do with however they're being, you know, I think the hard copies are getting scanned and the quality just is.
We don't, we don't have a, a format scanner. We, we don't scan them. We get the ele, when, when we get this, the, the applicant submits PDFs and copies. So we just take those PDFs and email them to you. That's it. We, we do not do any in-house scanning, so I guess.
I guess the scan from the applicant is bad, then?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm, I heard what you said. I'll work with, I'll, I'll talk to Barb tomorrow. Um, we'll work in-house to try to make sure we're, we're checking those, you know, scans to make sure they're adequate for your review. Thank you.
I think, you know, another thing to consider is that this is, um, you know, this is what the public is seeing too. They're seeing the digital copies. I don't think a whole lot of people from the public are going. So that's just another reason to make sure that they're, that they're legible.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought it up because I'm a hard copy guy still. I like to color marker. I write notes all over it. I, I can't do that on an electronic screen. I just haven't gotten there yet. I'm trying, but, uh, so I don't notice that. So I'm glad you, you brought that up because otherwise, I mean, I work with hard copies, so I wouldn't have caught that. Thank you.
Okay, how about a motion to adjourn? Or is anybody anxious to adjourn?
Sure, I'll make it.
Okay, John, thank you. Peter, were you, Peter, were you, you speaking?
Well, can I make a motion or second that in a second? I have one more, um, maybe request. This may be unreasonable, but, um, given, given how much paper we got and a relatively short amount of time between receiving it and, um, and this meeting, I, I guess my question, Dave, is whether as you get like certain documents back from UEI, for example, can the, can any of that be sent out piecemeal, like just so we have a little more time to spread out our review period? Or is that, is there laws and regulations around that? I'm just.
No, no laws and regulations. I mean, it's just a matter of logistics and keeping track of what we sent, what we haven't sent. Um, so let me, let me talk with the, in the office, cause I don't distribute that. Usually our system is, is that we get everything, we wait, we put it in one packet and we send it out. Uh, you know, we do get stuff like, you know, that, that thing today, where I got the UEI final letter just today, but I didn't send it on. So I have things that I could do. Let, let me, let me look into that. I'll add that to the list to talk, talk in-house tomorrow of how that's gonna work. Just don't wanna, you know, like, I know there's a set way that they do it, but let's see if we can accommodate that and track it. I'm getting the, the same materials multiple.
This is a pretty, uh, large plan, too. I mean, a project, so.
Right.
No offense. I'm ready for the second.
I will second it now.
Okay, those in favor, just hold up your hand manually. I think it'll be okay. Molly, all right. Have a good time. We'll see you in two weeks. Yay.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.